I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, I have a couple of housekeeping matters to attend to. First off, I'd like to welcome you to the December meeting of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. The fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the front or the back stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary. Donna is filling in for Michelle tonight for the purpose of a record and minutes, not a verbatim transcript. So when you come to the podium each time, please speak clearly into the microphone and identify yourself with your name and your address. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table by the door. Once the case is called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves with their names and their address, then pause for a moment. I'll swear you in and then proceed to present your case to the board. During the presentation, the board members will have an opportunity to question the applicant or engage in discussion. Once all that has been completed, then we will open the case to public input. Anyone who wishes to speak to the board regarding the application should come to the podium and identify themselves along with their address and direct questions to the board. Those speaking at the public hearing are not sworn. There's no need for that. Then we have three categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The next is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And the third category is those who would like to talk to us about something perhaps related to the application or something related to the board's role but aren't in favor or opposed to the application or don't know what their position is. That's the third category. Once all categories of those wishing to speak have been heard, then we give the applicant or their representative an opportunity to respond to anything that came up during the presentation. Once that's completed, then the case will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take short recess. Then we'll return to deliberate each case in the order that the cases appear on the agenda and for which the applicants are still present. So if the first case, the applicant, has left, we would take up the second case and then at the end of doing proceeding in that fashion, we would go back and take up the first case for the applicant that's not present. During this portion of the meeting, there is no further input allowed unless it is solicited by the board. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation if you wish to leave and you're interested in knowing what the results were. You can tune into TV and watch or you can call the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after 9:00 AM and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. Before we get underway, I'd like to welcome Tim Scott, who is our newest board member. He is now the, what do we call that? Alternate, alternate. All I could think of was temporary. Alternate board member who serves if members of the board are absent. Ryan started out that way. So, welcome to the board. Nice to have you with us. It is the season, ho, ho, ho. I hope everybody has a happy holiday. We're now going to get down to business and we'll call the first case.
ZB 1712-1, upon the matter of request by Michael Moore for an area variance to maintain an existing detached garage with less than required rear setback and exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 117 Breezeway Drive in an R3 residential district.
How are you?
I'm Brian Slagel, 123 Baton Drive. I'll be representing.
Okay. You could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your relationship to the owner is?
We're lifelong friends.
Do you have anything that is from him that indicates that it's okay for you to speak for him tonight?
I don't have anything written, no sir.
He notified staff that he'd be coming. He didn't do it in writing, but he told staff that he would have a representative.
The owner said that he would have a representative?
That he couldn't.
Is this the person he said would be appearing?
Yes.
The only reason I ask is because if, you know, if somebody decided to appear and put on a case and then we made a decision and then the owner says, geez, who was arguing my case? I didn't.
No, no sir. That's not the case. Understand though.
Alright, so I just wanted to clarify that. Alright, so you're familiar with his application then?
I am.
Alright, and when I read it, he indicated that he was asking for the variances because he regretfully built the garage without a permit.
Correct.
And that creates a problem.
Understood.
Well, how much would it cost to relocate the garage to be within the dimensions that the zoning ordinance says roughly? Do you have any idea?
No idea.
My guess is it would probably be about $10,000.
Seems to be a fair guess.
And a building permit for a garage costs what?
$50?
$50.
With also with, maybe that's the application fee. So with certificate of compliance and the charge for the garage, I believe the total bill would be $150.
Alright, I will date myself, but when I was a little kid, there was a Fram oil filter ad on television with a mechanic crawling out from under a car. And he said that, you know, Fram oil filters were about $3 or $4 and that it was $1,000 or more to rebuild an engine and that you could pay him now or you could pay him later. Alright? So I'm reminded of that when, you know, and if he had gotten the permit, they would have explained to him where it needed to be built. Is there a reason that he didn't get the permit?
Well, initially, you'll remember the windstorm hit. And what that did to his existing garage that he had before this one was it wrecked it a bit. So.
So it was no longer functional and usable?
It was still full of his stuff, but at the time of the windstorm, it was still bad weather out. When the weather cleared, we made plans to try and do a repair on that garage. So he took everything, his car and everything, out of the garage, all of his tools, tarped it, went in and looked, made a lumber list. We went and got the lumber, came back, and as we started trying to work on it, it was damaged a lot more than we had previously thought. So all of his stuff was outside. He had mentioned that that particular garage was actually built over the property line. Everybody was aware of it. He didn't feel right about doing that, you know, repairing it or whatever.
It also wasn't lined up with his driveway, right?
It was on the wrong side. The driveway, as you're looking at his house, the driveway's on the east. His garage is on the west side of his lot.
I think the old garage was on the east and the driveway's on the west. He's on the south side of.
Sorry.
That's alright.
A little nervous.
No problem. Don't be nervous. We don't bite.
Here he is with all of his stuff, every tool he owns and all the stuff that was in his garage out underneath tarps. It was raining like crazy. Every other day it would pour and then it'd be nice for two days it would pour. So we just bought the lumber. I mean, we're all friends. We're all really handy. We did it on our spare time. We tried to help him out. We tried to get the thing up. We took measurements off the fence, which was dumb, admittedly. Obviously, it's in the wrong spot. And the height, we changed the pitch to a 12-12 pitch at the last minute while we were cutting the rafters just out of thought that the collar ties would then be tall enough because he's using the top for storage. It was, that's the, we didn't think about the height change. Obviously, it gains a couple inches every foot or whatever. Oversight, two bad oversights that we did on this. It was just a bunch of us friends helping him out. We built it for him, with him. And we all did it on our spare time. We worked all summer on it and, you know, here we are. We didn't want all of his stuff outside for a real long time and we maybe got a little caught up in the gravity of the situation, our particular perception of the gravity of the situation. I apologize for that, but.
Alright.
Looking forward, we'd like to straighten it out with you guys.
So the variance that you're requesting is one foot on the rear setback?
Yes, sir.
And one foot on the height, right?
Correct.
And other than that, it's built to code?
Totally.
And it looks very good and it makes more sense to have it on the same side of the house as the driveway? Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, my comment is that I've been in that situation. In my case, the hole was in the roof of the house because I was in expand over the bathroom. And then I had to go away and while I was away, a huge thunderstorm came. And thanks to my friends at the Pleasant Fire Department, they came over and put a nice tarp over it and made sure it was nailed down. And so you do that for friends. So I can understand fully. Let's get the job done. Let's get stuff out of the rain and permit, what? Permit? It can be like the last thing on your mind. I can understand that from where you're coming from, so.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It's pathetic.
We understand that.
It's not a statement, you know what I mean?
The reason that we give everyone who does something like that a hard time is to impress on the people who watch and it's amazing the number of people who do watch that before they do anything to improve or alter their property, they should call the town and check and say, do I need a permit for that? The permit is intended to let the town know that you're doing it so the town can make sure that it's done right. You did it right and that it's in the right spot or to let you know if you need, so you can come to us for permission instead of forgiveness. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Yes?
I got a question. A question for staff. If we grant this variance, will the town issue a building permit for this existing garage?
So there's two things. If this board were to consider an approval, it would need to be conditioned upon a New York State variance from New York State Building Code because it's three feet and three feet from a property line requires a certain type of building material to be used inside and out. And the modifications that would be required to the structure are fairly significant. And so a variance is probably the better alternative through New York State Department of State, which is the division that handles the, oversees the building code. So it would be, this board could only make an approval conditioned upon New York State granting its variance for the existing structure. The owner of the property is aware of that. I contacted Mr. Moore this morning to let him know based on the fire marshal's review of the building plans as constructed.
Okay. Ms. President, can you inform us what else is needed to, what does New York State require?
No, it's just a setback. So when it's within three, if it's within three feet, which this is, the structure is, then it has to meet certain requirements for one hour fire separation. And the material that the existing garage is constructed with do not meet those requirements. So typically, it's, you know, block, fire, cement board, things that have a fire rating. And so that's why he would need to go to New York State for a variance. And because it's a non-habitable structure, those kinds of things typically, you know, are considered favorably when reviewing an application or a variance like that through New York State. And it's, we were debating whether or not, I think that the New York State would need or want to know whether or not the zoning board was willing to grant the zoning relief before it took up the building permit or the building code relief.
Well, that makes sense because if we denied it, you'd have to move it and then it wouldn't need the variance from them.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense. Alright. Any other questions or comments from the board?
You have a question. Has Michael talked to any of his neighbors about the garage at all? Do they?
I'm glad you brought that up. I was just given the letter from one of the neighbors who is my across the street neighbor. We're friendly. She wasn't home. She went on a long vacation. We didn't know she was leaving and we didn't exactly know what happened to her. When she came back, I went over immediately and talked to her. And her, during our conversation, her biggest concern was the window that we installed in the back. Now, we put the window in the back to make it look more like not a garage, but unfortunately, she didn't like the fact that the window looked down into her dining room, living room area. So we put a shade on the window immediately that day that I talked to her. I told her, we're going right now. We're going to get a shade. Is that okay? And she's like, oh, that'd be great. It's been there ever since. And he's got a LED battery light up there so that even at night, she can see that the shade is drawn. Because we didn't, we didn't want any, we're all good neighbors. We felt kind of bad because it did look, I mean, she left and she came back and she's like, oh my God, you know? So we talked with her. I talked with her for a long time. I'm not going to speak for her. I don't exactly know what her position is, but from our conversation, I gathered that she was okay. Once we put the blind up, that really bothered her. She was very adamant about that. And we eliminated that issue that day.
There's a garage a few doors to the east that looks like it's headed for the same path as his old garage.
To the east.
Couple houses down. Looks like it's ready to.
There's a, that windstorm was.
One good windstorm and it might fall.
Ugly on a lot of old structures. That one that he had had to be built, I would say, in the 30s. The posts were in beer kegs, oak barrels, small oak barrels filled with concrete with posts in them. There were six of them holding, I mean, you know, there was no floor in it. That's why it racked so good.
Must be an interesting preparation if it was six beer kegs.
Right?
Alright. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application?
Would it be possible for me to do that? Because I'm a neighbor or is that not?
Well, I assume that since you agreed to present it to him, that you're in favor of it, since you helped him build it. Just an assumption. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who would like to talk to us about garages and windows and setbacks and fire retardant materials or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next application. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
ZB 1712-2, upon the matter of request by the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union for an area variance to main a dumpster without an enclosure pursuant to Town Code Section 192-20B receptacles on premises 824 East Ridge Road in a C Business District.
Good evening. My name is Roman Akshesak. I'm representing Ukrainian Federal Credit Union, 824 East Ridge Road, Rochester, New York.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. I guess my question is, why does the dumpster need to remain uncovered?
We believe that the dumpster, I mean, first of all, we're a credit union. All of our papers are being shredded in the secured facility. And it's literally just wet paper towels and maybe a couple of boxes per week that we produce. So currently, we use a two-yard dumpster and it sits behind our building. So nobody can really see it from a main, from a main road. One, our neighbor on its former restaurant that is kind of slowly dilapidating. On the back, there's apartment complex that we have about some kind of shrubs and a fence that separates us. And the church, we did, made an attempt to contact, represented from the church verbally. They said they don't have any objections and never have an issue with that. I also made an attempt to contact apartment owner, kind of unsuccessfully. They told me they're going to call me back a couple of times, but nothing really happened. The dumpster's been there for about 15-plus years in the same locations. Usually, it's neat that we don't have any garbage laying around. Lids are closed and we believe that to build that enclosure probably is not going to be cost-effective for us. And it's been proven over a period of 15-plus years that it's been kept as it should be because we have all kinds of customers and we take care of our property very diligently. We have a professional landscaper cleaners around it. I mean, frequently, we do clean up all the garbage that's being brought over by wind from neighboring properties. And that's our case on it.
Have you seen the letter that the board received from Mr. Goldblatt?
Yes.
Alright, and do you have any comment on his suggestion that you could switch to something that wouldn't require? And the reason I ask that is because in order for us to grant a variance, the applicant has to demonstrate that there's a hardship. And part of that is that there is no alternative to the variance that would alleviate the hardship. So to the extent that he's suggesting that there's an alternative to your disposal solution that wouldn't require the variance, that, because that is attractive because variances are exceptions that are given to people from what the rules are that apply to everybody else. And so in order to be able to say that we're not being arbitrary and capricious, we have to have some basis for doing it. So if there's an alternative that doesn't require a variance, then generally, we'll ask the applicant to go and pursue that rather than, so that they're subject and abiding by the same rules as everybody else in town. So that's why I ask if you, you know, would be receptive to what he's suggesting and whether that would work.
The way I see it, it probably should work. There's one thing recently, about six, eight months ago, we renewed our contract with the waste management and I believe it's a 36-month term. So I'm not quite sure what's going to be terms and conditions of canceling that one, that contract and switching to 96 gallons totals.
Would you be willing to explore that?
Yes.
And would you be agreeable to having us adjourn your case to January to give you time to explore that, to see if that's a viable alternative?
Sure.
Because as I said, if there's a viable alternative to granting a variance, then I think, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think our preference and I think legal counsel will say that that's probably the route we should go.
That's fair.
Okay, alright. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Roman, how many people are employed by that credit union?
In this building, we have about 30.
Okay, and do they typically eat lunch in the facility?
Yes, about half of them.
Okay.
I think I see what he's getting at. And I looked at that and I see the dumpster and I see it's not enclosed or anything. And I don't know if we have any control about what goes in there. I mean, you mentioned it's shreddable paper for the most part, which makes sense.
Shredded paper doesn't go in the dumpster, right?
Shredded paper is getting picked by destruction company. So it's primarily like wet paper towels from a kitchen, from a lunchroom and the napkins.
Okay, so it's, it still has to be taken somewhere and disposed of. Okay. So I was leading this proposal that this fellow made and to me, it made a lot of sense. And I think it should be cost-effective over a period of time. So, yeah, I would.
Whether Waste Management will work with you on that or not? Hopefully, they will.
One month's term should be sufficient for us to explore and then present all the evidences in the next meeting.
Alright. And another alternative is, you said you just signed up for a three-year term with them?
I believe so because usually they sign a contract, we just review it, they lower the price and then we move on with it.
Check on when the term expires because if the, if they're not willing to work with you and that the option that's suggested here isn't a viable one, we may be able to just grant you limited relief if we're so inclined to the end of that term, at which point you'd either have to enclose it or switch to something else. That's another option. I'm not saying that that's possible, but, you know, that's another thing to be throwing out there.
Okay.
Alright. Tell Waste Management that the town would really appreciate them working with you. I'm sure that will carry a lot of weight with them. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to talk to us about dumpster enclosures or anything, trash or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. And we'll take a three-minute, well, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll come back at 7:32. And we'll take a three-minute, well, we'll take a five-minute recess, we'll come back at seven thirty-two.